And whereas section two dot two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the New Kent County School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the New Kent County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and two, only such visit, public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the New Kent County School Board.
Do I hear a motion to approve the certification of the closed session?
I move we approve the certification of the closed session.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. First item on our agenda are the superintendent's responses to citizen comments received at the November eighth board meeting.
Right, thank you, Ms. Tesco. This is our second work session, which has become our practice of comments that we receive at the regular board meeting. We answer to the best of our abilities at the work session. I do want to apologize on the front end of this one. We rely heavily on the recording of these sessions. This session was recorded. However, there was no audio, which has been addressed and fixed. Yes, okay, good. So we are going through our notes and those different pieces. So if your question isn't specifically addressed, we'll work through that, but we believe we have it captured. Some participants gave us their questions. In future, if we were to have that happen, we will reach out one by one and go through those pieces. So. So first question, are you aware of a specific metric that will allow the children to unmask? Or at what point do parents get to choose if they want their children wearing masks or not? So as we outlined in our last meeting under the Health Commissioner's order, we don't have a specific metric at this point. We have not been given one, we haven't been provided one. The good news is case counts have been declining and our quarantine numbers, which we publish every week on our website, have shown that decline. So that is great news for us that the quarantines have been less disruptive. I do think that with the election results that have occurred, I do think there'll be a change. I would expect that change to be sometime in January, if not sooner, but that is really speculation on my part and just what I'm hearing and learning at the state level. So that was question one. Question two, you, the superintendent, have stated publicly that no CRT is being taught in the schools. Does this mean you are not embracing the navigating ed equity from the Virginia Department of Education? It is essentially CRT. It takes the premise that any discrepancy in life is chalked up to racist. So that document is a fifty-six page document. It is produced through a steering committee at the Virginia Department of Education. It is not a document that we are required to utilize. It's not a foundation document for New Kent County Public Schools. Our foundation documents, which are all available, strategic plan, portrait of a graduate instructional framework. I did go through the ed equity report. And I'll tell you the premise that we work on here. What, what the document does want to do is eliminate the predictability of student outcomes based on race, gender, zip code, socioeconomic stance, or languages spoken. So that is work that we do. We look at every data point that we have and do any of those factors currently predict success. And I think if you've been watching our board members, board meetings you've been attending, you've heard me say several times that one of the biggest predictors of outcomes right now in our data is socio-economic status. So free and reduced lunch is where we see the biggest disparity. How do you work on that? So that is a piece that's in that document that is a part of our work. But that document as a whole is not a part of our daily work. So board members, I'd be happy to do a more extensive report on that, but for the purposes of citizen comments, that's what I, what I agree from that. Is the public allowed to view the history of our, the history or other curriculum? That's an easy one. Yes, the public is allowed to view that. A lot of that's available online through the Virginia Department of Education. We actually have a couple citizens that have come in to review different parts of curriculum or different textbooks or different those pieces. So we are a public entity. We are a partnership with the public. No issues there on our end. How are you personally monitoring that no teachers are promoting their specific political views in the classroom? So the best way for many answer to that is we work through our principals, assistant principals, lead teachers to monitor classrooms. We have a lot of people in classrooms. In addition, we also monitor classrooms. And when there is something that comes to our attention that is not part of our curriculum, we address that. So, so we handle that. Would like to know about all the federal funds received for COVID and how it is spent, particularly how is it being helped to address learning loss due to virtual school? So you're in luck on that question. We have a full presentation about that tonight. So Ms. McBeath asked for a similar presentation, so we believe we'll, we'll address that tonight. My favorite question? Can the teachers get a raise? This should be a high priority, in my opinion. Absolutely. Full agreement, full support. And as we move forward in the budget process, you'll definitely see that as a priority as well. I agree. So more of a general update around the middle school book. We are working on our process manual. So our, our policy has outlined the different levels of oversight. What we're working on is a process manual for selection and a process manual for how books are tagged and parent consent connected to them. So Mr. Miller provided, Ross Miller provided a presentation for you a couple of weeks ago. The young adult books, those that are rated thirteen plus are currently being tagged and apparent consent portion is being enacted because what we've heard from various speakers is that this book is appropriate, this book is not appropriate. That way it's the parent consent piece and that way it can vary by household. But once again, the household is part of that process. So we'll be reviewing our books under the new guidelines. Once that process has been completed, the intent is to have that completed prior to winter break, which sounds like a long time, but it's really three school weeks before we go to winter breaks. A question was asked about the specific poet X and was it available? The book is not available for checkout at the middle school. So as we work through this process. Had a couple of questions about systemic racism and I really had difficulty addressing that and I need to go back to the individual or individuals that asked that question for further clarification. Is the systemic racism as it stands right now? And for that, I would go back to the equity, education equity based on predictability of student outcomes. So if we have a data point that is connected to a, a specific student piece, that may fall in that umbrella, but I hate to go any further on that. So I need to have a more in-depth conversation about that piece. So those are the questions that we had and then the categories connected to those. The board members, I'd be happy to add to that.
I think Dr. Nichols, I appreciate the, the question about the teachers and the raise piece. And I think one of the things that as we have even talked earlier in a personnel situation of, even though it may not come across as the bottom line of their paycheck, one of the things I think that as many staff people have communicated, as we heard from human resources even this evening about one of the things that we have been able to do to help with that area is with the, with the enactment of paying for the benefits over the holiday, which is a huge cash benefit to the majority of all staff people, as well as closing public schools for the first two days, which is a huge benefit in a lot of different ways for staff as well. So I think those things also add to the creativity of increasing.
Value, right?
Value, yes, thank you, Ms. Aspel. Is that to, to our, to our employees as well? So thank you for, for addressing that and how we can continue to be creative in making it a value-driven environment for our teachers and staff.
And we, we really look at it as total compensation. So it does, you know, those pieces. And I believe New Kent could do things that other larger school division can't do just because we're smaller and I, I think we're more personable and we can do some of those things. So yeah, that one piece of the puzzle, but working on those others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I did, I'm sorry, I left out one, one piece. I did get a question about electronic participation and citizen comments. So that was initially put together during the COVID piece, when not everybody felt comfortable to do that. So with your permission, I would like to pull that piece to have them read out loud as I can. One, it's an interpretation of the reader. Two.
Tone is hard to read.
Really, we have good participation, good participation here. You can come here, you can listen, and, and I think we're all very approachable in between board meetings if you have a question. So if we do receive that communication, it will be printed and it will be put into your folders and we'll respond through that way. So you will not see that moving forward. So I apologize for not putting that on the front, but it connected to citizen comments and I wanted to kind of weave that in there as well.
I'm just going to clarify what, in another way, speak back what you're saying. So as we receive electronic comments and questions via email or phone calls or whatever, we're not going to address them during the meeting, but we will address them. So we will be following back up with those folks that we receive emails from, you know, in a timely manner and responding to whatever their questions and concerns are with those folks that are impacted or have any input on the question that's being asked.
Absolutely. We just will not set aside a portion of time to read those.
Right, okay, understood. I agree with that. Do you want further discussion about that?
I have, no, I agree. I have one other, one other comment about the comments. With regard to the question about history and other curriculum strains, one thing we used to do in the past is have presentations about what we're doing through the entire, you know, school division. So I think it might be helpful if we had a presentation on, you know, history, Virginia history and government, what we're doing in the schools.
Are you referring to what specific subjects or, you know, areas of that?
Yes. So what, you know, what are we doing? What are this, what are the children learning in kindergarten? You know, they're learning about local, local history and culture, you know, what, you know, and as you go through the years, it builds. So it becomes, you know, so you go through US history, world history and whatnot. So I, I just think that would be helpful and that would probably answer the question for a lot of people. I think that'd be helpful as well.
And just as, as a reminder, in the process for adopting textbooks, there is a public input piece. We do put the textbooks on display several places. So prior to an adoption of a textbook, and textbook's not necessarily curriculum. So if you look at one of our textbooks, we do not go page by page by page. It not always in the right sequence for, for our pacing, but that's another involvement, community parent involvement piece too. But I can work with Mr. Miller to come up with a presentation potentially at a work session, so you can dive into a little deeper. We give it a little more time. So be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts about comments and other things that we should be considering? I know that we had checked with some other divisions and asked about ceding their time, if that was part of their practice and how long that people spoke. Do we want to address that or discuss the ability for people to cede their time to other, other people? Do we like doing that?
So, so I think over several of the recent meetings, people have come in with a premeditated strategy to string together a couple of three minutes. Thanks, Wayne. So, so basically we had a number of people ceding time and I think that, that has a potential to get out of hand for us. So I think I would, I would suggest that we, people take their three minutes and present their comment in that three minutes and then allow the next person.
And not speak, and not speak for other people?
Correct. I, I would agree with Ms. Barbara. I think as a board, we've been evolving through this process of more increased citizen comment, which we appreciate. But we do agree that citizens have three minutes to speak and make their point. And they're welcome to come back every month at the monthly meeting to speak. But the process and the, the adoption of seating, seating time is just not something that we as a board agree that we should be doing moving forward.
Yes, I would agree as well.
We will. We're, we're, we're having discussion. We're discussing. So I think three minutes is, is very generous in, in terms of having our constituents, you know, bring forth their issues and concerns. And I think it's important to hear opinions from all constituents to whom we serve.
Absolutely. I agree one hundred percent. I think that, again, Ms. McBeath, I, I would agree wholeheartedly that I think three minutes is an ample amount of time to present your, your concerns or your comments. And I think arbitrarily deferring those to someone else is, is not in the best interest of giving everyone an opportunity long-term to be able to express their opinions. And so I would agree that we would suspend that practice of deferring, continually to defer time within the, within the process of public comment.
Agreed. If you would like to speak, if you want to sign up, we're happy to hear from you. We're happy to hear, hear from you and, and what you have to say.
During our meetings.
During our meetings.
There, and we do also have other avenues for public input. We have both email, phone calls, where, where we welcome, those are opportunities to have deeper discussions that extend beyond a three-minute period.
Absolutely. So do I, somebody want to make a motion? I guess I can make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we suspend the practice of deferring time during public comments and that the comments would only be limited to the person who has signed up to speak for three minutes only.
Okay. And do I, do I hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Tesco.
Oh.
I know you guys did a discussion, but they want to do it.
Do, is there any?
See if there's any further discussion now that there's a motion.
Yes. So we have, we now have a motion on the floor to amend our practice of allowing folks, citizen comments to cede, cede their time to somebody else such that when people sign up, they would be only allowed to speak for themselves, for the person that signed up. And that is the motion on the floor. Is there any other further discussion? We have a motion in a second. Okay. All those in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, the, did we have any other, any other citizen or superintendent comments?
No matter, that is, that completes.
I do want to thank all of the, all of my fellow board members for, for joining me at the conference, either in person or virtually this, this week at the Virginia School Board Association. There was a lot of great discussions that were being had around various topics. So I really appreciate everybody participating in that as well. All right, next item on our agenda is vaccination update, mandate update. Dr. Nichols.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. What I bring to you is a very muddy update, but wanted to let you know where we think we are in terms of vaccine slash testing mandate update. Now, this is for employees. So Ms. Millerfield. So we know that there is a new vaccination requirement for employees with more than a hundred, hundred or more employees. Of course, we fall in that category. We have around five hundred employees. So OSHA is issuing a COVID nineteen vaccination and testing emergency temporary standard. Four states who have OSHA-approved plans, we are one, Virginia is one of twenty-three states with an OSHA-approved plan. So that is the vehicle for which this mandate is flowing through. It requires employees with a hundred or more employees to have employees fully vaccinated or test weekly. Okay, I know you probably very familiar with that and have seen those pieces. So these are some of the details. January fourth is, is the deadline that we were working on. Not sure why by J is cut off there and requires unvaccinated employees to produce a negative test on at least a weekly basis. And ensure all unvaccinated employees are masked by December fifth. So in schools, that's really not an issue currently because we're all masked in schools. But if, when that changes, you know, that will be something that we would have to enforce. Companies that don't abide by the rules could be hit with nearly fourteen thousand, I think it's thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars per violation. Before I move on to the next slide, just, this causes me great concern and has absolutely nothing to do with vaccination. So I've actually been boosted as of Saturday. It's really for me is it's, it's another challenge for us to work through for employees. You've heard us talk greatly that we have held this school division together by people subbing in all areas. We've seen other school divisions that have gone ahead of this and done a full vaccination mandate. We've seen it in other professions that there are people that will leave. Also for us to stand up a weekly testing component is no easy feat. Now, we're not required to do that. But if you are testing weekly, you're going to do that on your time, which means you're going to leave us every Monday for half a day to go to Richmond or go to wherever and test. It'd be incumbent, it would be smart for us to stand up our own weekly testing so you come right here to the high school test and go teach or test and go do that. But that's a big undertaking for school divisions that are already stretched really thin. So I do have, have some concerns with it. If it comes through, we'll handle it like we handle everything else and we'll make it happen and we'll take care of kids and we'll do what we do.
Again, this is not something that we have any control over, correct?
No, this is not something that we have control over. So I started out by saying this is muddy at best. If you've been following the news. So OSHA has suspended activities related to the implementation and enforcement pending further developments in the litigation. So that's kind of where we are now. We're on hold, but at the same time, we have to make some moves forward on the testing side of things. So we are partnering with Vista, which is the state agency to be partnered with a contractor. This is all grant funding that would occur, that we could set, set up weekly testing if we wanted to move in that direction. So we're still moving in that direction to be ready, but at the same time, kind of seeing where this goes. And we don't know politically where it will go or how it will end up, but we can't wait on an answer. All work moving forward, I kind of jumped ahead of this a little bit. There is a county resolution, so your partners at the Board of Supervisors at their last meeting, put together a resolution opposing this mandate. So I have sent that to you guys. We're also hosting vaccination clinics. We did a, over nine hundred people received boosters and vaccines on Saturday in partnership with the county. We, we are having another clinic for students. We did have commented the last one, it wasn't a question about vaccinated children without permission and against their will. We do not do any of that. That is all parent approval, parent consent, completely voluntary. And then we're working on setting up onsite testing for students and employees. So if you're not well, we, we can rule out COVID and so forth. So that's our work moving forward. With the county putting together a resolution opposing the mandate, I just wanted you guys to have that. And if you wanted us to work in any particular direction, we can, we can do that as well. So we're kind of standing still and moving forward at the same time. So any questions, concerns? More information?
So with the OSHA thing on hold, does that delay the January fourth mandate as well?
My work, I, we don't know. And my worry that, I know they're working to resolve it quickly in the courts. My worry is it's going to be resolved quickly and if it, if it, if they find in favor of the mandate, we may still be stuck with that January fourth. So internally, we're working on January fourth. But at the same time, we're not trying to panic employees as well. So just working through that process, vaccination status, and kind of seeing where we are. Because the way this has kind of gone through with, with public schools, at least, is you don't really have a good handle on full vaccination and who is it, who isn't. So we're working through that process as well to kind of figure out where are we at? Are we at seventy? Are we at ninety? Are we at, I mean, that's what we need to have in order to stand up the, the testing and know what the volume would be.
Right. So we can't require a, a team member to tell us their vaccination status, but we can require them, so I guess no matter what, we're going to be masking. But once they lift the mask mandate, you know, I would assume that's going to change for people that are like, as it has with OSHA, where people in other businesses, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear the mask. If we were to move in that direction and we have people that don't want to, want to give us that information, I would assume they would just have to remain masked.
That would be the, that would be the default for testing and for masking based on what we're reading now. So we've had our legal team look at it. It was a topic of conversation at, at the most recent superintendent's conference. We're all trying to kind of navigate that, figure that out together.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
You know, just something for consideration, you know, the Board of Supervisors put forth that resolution. I'm concerned it may be problematic that we've got one part of the county is doing one thing and, you know, potentially we may be doing something else. I think we should consider looking at something like that.
I would assume that if they move forward and they get, and they are able to make something happen, we would be able to follow.
They already have.
They've already.
They already, they cast a resolution.
They were able to do it.
November eighth, they did.
So.
But does it, I didn't understand the resolution completely, but I didn't read it all the way through. Is that even though they're not mandating, does that mean that they still have to require weekly testing?
They no longer have to do that?
It's my understanding they don't.
I would support it then.
My, my read of their current resolutions, they, they oppose the mandate. They, they're not saying what they would do if it comes through. It's just that, I, I would, and this may not be the right parallel, but our board, the school board, put together a letter about local control and, you know, the over, the perceived overreach with masking and, and not having things be a local decision for schools. It, it feels like the Board of Supervisors is doing something similar and saying, we, we oppose this mandate, it really should be a, a local decision. So.
And while I agree, there's a lot of similarities we have with the county, county, we certainly have a lot of differences with the number of our staff, teachers and staff. It's, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, in my opinion. And I, I think it's just, here we are again. You know, we have, we have requirements, we have orders, we have mandates, we have laws, we have rules, we have policies, we have standards, we have all of these things. And, you know, I, I just feel that right now, the, the announcement's been suspended because of the, the pending litigation. We're transitioning to a new administration in January. And, and I just think right now, I, I just don't know if we're ready to do something of that magnitude, like what the Board of Supervisors did. I, I may be alone in that, but I, I just feel like we need to, we need, we need to look at this a little bit more. We've always encouraged the vaccine with the clinics that we've had, the clinic we just had this past Saturday. And at this point, you know, if, if somebody hasn't been vaccinated, it, it is a concern. It's a real concern and they should be testing. If they're not vaccinated, they, they're masked and they should be testing if they're, if they're not vaccinated at this point. But I, I'm not, I'm not certain right now that we need to pass a resolution for that particular decision.
Well, now I would think to say that we would definitely need more information about what that's gonna, what would that mean if the rules changed and then how do you enforce those? The rules changed and then how do you enforce those?
Well, I don't think anything, if, if the rules change, then, then the resolution's really nothing, you know, right? It's, it's just a posturing, in my opinion. Um, and uh, you know, at this point, I, I, I don't know if it's going to mean anything. And.
So we had a, a December fifth deadline as well, just to bring that into the mix. Um, and Haney's here and Allison's here, they were on a webinar with OSHA as well, uh, for collection of information and. And I'm not sure if that's been paused. As well with this whole process, but by our next meeting on December sixth. Um, I can bring you an update on where, I mean, you're, we're all following it nationally anyway, but I can bring a public update on where we are and what we're. Uh, working through, I. It is kind of sort of a, a wait and see, I just don't want to be caught. Move forward with the mandate and we're not ready to roll by January four.
Okay. Any other further discussion on vaccination mandate? All right, moving into old business, next on our agenda is Quentin Elementary School update, um, Mr. Pollack and Mr. Rizer.
Hi guys, what I brought y'all to start with is our minutes, I gave everybody a copy of them. From our last meeting, and what I'm gonna do is just generally go through this and see if anybody has any questions, at the same time, just updating highlight parts of it. As of right now, we're, the sprinkler system install is, is basically being installed. The water heaters are on site, they've been installed, HVAC units, the rooftop units are in place in the areas where we have completed roof. Uh, work on the switch gears continuing, uh, it's about eighty percent. Setting of steel and that's in, setting of steel in section A, we should be finished by the end of the month. Section B, we've got block fills, sprinkler pipe. Uh, the walls and sophocuses in the kitchens and in the restroom areas are starting to go up. Plumbing rough in is ongoing, sprinkler rerouting for the gym is taking place. We have the curtain walls going up and the storefront framing, have you seen from the road? Yes.
That's a missed call. So section A, what section is the part without the steel right now?
That you would be over in F and uh.
So that's not A?
No, section A is right over at the beginning where you see all the, where the cafeteria and all that's in there.
Okay, gotcha.
So on the right side of the picture.
So everything you see to the far side of the picture there. Where actually you can't see it very well at all, this is from the back, so you got the cafeteria right there where the thing is at now, where the windows are going into cafeteria. Then you've got your uh, section A coming down in front of the bus loop and moving across the face there.
So is that the section without the steel that is, we're waiting on steel or that's on site and that's?
Yeah, we're finishing up the part of steel there, yes. I mean, when they're talking steel now, they're talking more steel decking than they are of, of, of.
Of the beams.
Of the beams.
Okay.
The cold steel and all that's basically done, we're waiting on the, the inside for metal, for doing area, all the walls that are. Metal stud walls, stuff to that effect, that's what we're waiting on in supplies right now. That's actually the biggest issue we got going on with supplies right now.
Is the. Stud frame?
Yes.
Light gauge framing.
Yeah, the light gauge framing, we also are waiting for the brick, uh, it's a specialty brick for up there, so it's still on order. Supposed to arrive here in December, we have started our air barrier where you see all the yellow and all that being sprayed on, that's all your air barrier being put up. That's why we took the flag down, because we're still going around with the air barrier. We've done our first inspections on that as of last week. Apparently. That really takes us through the process on that. The rest of the stuff we have here is some metals, uh, like for lighting. Your uh, interior lighting, we're having little issues getting that straight. Uh, but everything's still on time schedule wise, as of right now, we're thirty-five days behind still guys, we haven't lost a single day since the first episode of it. So we're steadily chugging along on that. Does anybody looking through here have anything that they see they want to discuss?
Do you, do you continue to see as the progress and we get closer to the interior finishes? That, that the supply chain issue will apparently just.
For the most part, we're okay.
Okay.
I mean, what we're trying to do now, and that's really what I brought this to you here for today, I don't really like doing this lineup by line. But I really brought it to you today for is that we're trying to get ahead of that, we, we are working on our allowances where we're gonna. Keep, uh, uh, actually, we already have, uh, ordered the stuff for the cameras, the, all the electronic stuff on my side that I will be handling, the door locks. The access controls, all that is already in the process. We received the back from Hartland or. Or, what do you want to call it, the uh, allowance money that we had for these purchases. We received that back on the credit this month. So from that point on, and I'll let Kyle step in here too, uh, I'm handling one side of it, Kyle's handling the other side of it. He and then Matt are working on the technology side of it, and I'm handling the cameras to access the intercom systems, that side of it.
I was gonna mention a little bit later, but also instructional resources, technology, we're trying to get months ahead. Uh, we have space available within the county, so we can bring that in when we open doors next year, um, September, we're ready to roll.
It, it's interesting, no rhyme or reason, so these technology allowances that we put together were before this project went forward.
Two years.
So two, yeah, over two years ago, so we were clinging on what those prices would come back at. And we're actually right at, if not a little bit under on some of those things, so it's just. Yeah, some things have escalated dramatically and some haven't moved at all and. The supply chain just kind of bumps around a little bit, but what the team has really done a great job of is just uh, speeding up the timelines in which we would submit things. So I don't know what we have left to submit, but it's not much.
I know, they're working on their end of it, we should be done in about, when would you say, Kyle, to the point where we can actually put it out?
We're working on the AV quote for technology right now, um, we're gonna look at playground options and that design. So I'm hoping by January, we have everything purchased and ready to go. Um, then as the, the planning principle, that's great, because I can really start focusing on my staff and instruction at that point. Um, getting ahead is essential right now.
The other points on this too, we put back in the bus loop, so that is back in. And we gave the price for what we actually were under, what you got back on the original thing, so we.
The canopy for the bus.
That's back in. So the only other, the only issue I got right now, actually on site, is the generator and the access to getting one. And we know that we've already gone through the process and reserved one if it need be, that if it does not show up here on time, we need it to get our oxy permit. So what we'll do is rent one if we have to, we're working with Hartland now on that issue, so we already have it reserved in, in place if we need to do it that way. So.
You mentioned the, the school's, school's zone signs, but um, what, what is that about, Mr. Pollack?
That is where we had to take and pull out, we had to pull out to get approval from VDOT to start with, uh. The initial VDOT made us pull out these singles uh, for approval at that time, but we, that has been put back in now and it's been approved by VDOT. So that's just your thirty-five mile an hour zones, they, the initial thing for the turning lanes and all, they may, we had to separate the two. Also, you'll see if you get back to the, you get to our change orders and. We're about, we're down to. You'll see the large credit on the, the, one of the reasons I wanted to bring it to you is because you have the large credit coming back from your allowances in there. You see it in there, that's already, the way this is going to work is we're going to use that is. It was given back as Hartland put it back into the project. Okay, so it's showing as a large credit on the job itself, and it will be used in, and Haney, you can step in anytime if I say anything wrong. We're going to use it like a contingency fund to pay for what we are from the allowances.
Uh, you want to take us through?
Absolutely, I'd love to take you through to uh, where we're at right now, these pictures were taken last week. Of course, you know, two days later, it looks completely different, so, um, kind of hard doing a presentation ahead of time. So for tonight, similar to last presentation, we're going to focus on the south side of the building. Um, the side where when you're driving on two forty-nine, you look up, you can see the big cafeteria windows and also the two floors. So. Here's kind of the transition again, kind of where we're going when it's all said and done, so the picture on the left again is from the south side. Uh, you can begin to see this is exciting windows going into the cafeteria. Um, so one of their main goals, definitely with the winter approaching, is closing these spaces in, um, so they can start bringing in more equipment and more materials. Also, uh, we now have a second floor, and, and that's kind of going to be our focus for tonight, uh, tonight's presentation. So the second floor, how's our fifth grade, uh, the first group to uh, graduate, I guess you could say, from Quentin Elementary School? Um, and you're probably wondering why I'm including stairs. Two weeks ago, I met with some future fifth graders at Quentin, and they were blown away that there were stairs to where they need to go. Um, they've spent their entire educational period on the first floor and just showing simply stairs shocked them. So, um, I had to include their excitement into this presentation. At the top of the stairwell, um, one of my favorite parts of the school, um, it overlooks the entire building, uh, Main Street, Quentin. Uh, that's the image on the left, and then on the image on the right will be the landing, that will include several learning spaces for all students, pre-K through five. And also our steam lab, that's a place where students can go and be designers and creators and they can code and do robotics. Um, so to me, that's really going to be an, an innovation hub for all of our students, ages five through eleven. So, um, we're getting there, uh, you can't really see the steam room quite yet, but from what I heard, that's where they're moving next on this project.
And I would tell you, I was on site this afternoon, as a matter of fact, there are some incredible sightlines, and you can stay in the one part of the building and be able to see just. All the way across upstairs, all the way down Main Street, the downstairs piece and down in instructional weight, so it was, it's quite impressive.
See some great opportunics for some uh, physics lessons there, perhaps some egg drops, uh, moving forward, we'll, we'll clean it up when we're done. The next space going down the hallway, this is where the fifth graders will be housed, uh, and again, when I close my eyes, I can imagine teachers out in that hallway and kids coming in in the morning. Um, so those are all five fifth grade classrooms. And then on the right side is the end of the hallway, where there's several learning spaces again for students to go and do small group or collaborate on a project together. Um, so this space was really defined in, I would say, the last three weeks. Um, the masonry team on this project is amazing, every time I go out there, there's a new wall up. So this is where you can really begin to feel where this learning is going to be taking place. The last place I would take you up on the, the fifth grade second floor is, I think everyone's favorite, the learning terrace. So at the end of the fifth grade hallway, this is an opportunity for students to go outside, um, and continue their learning and their collaboration. So on the right hand side, that is the finished um, product, the rendering on the bottom, um, it'll be able to have about forty-eight students on this rooftop deck. Uh, also, there'll be several planters there, uh, some great opportunities for agriculture and, and science lessons. And that will overlook the entire courtyard uh, of the elementary school. So really, I think to most people who go out there, their favorite space uh, in the building. Some other areas of the building that are worth noting, on the left, there's our cafeteria from the inside. And one thing that I now look at, because I've been hanging out with Tim a lot, is I look at ductwork, uh, I look at pipes, I look at electrical. And, and that's a part that most people don't see is just all the work that's going into the infrastructure, that, you know, we have electrical going in, we have boilers going in. You know, we're, we're starting to feel like a school, and it, it's really an amazing feeling when you go in there. So we'll be finishing that uh, glass up hopefully soon, um, there'll also, also be some different glasses like blue and orange to kind of give it a nice. Um, color on the inside when students are uh, eating their lunches.
So, quick question, those windows, are they tinted?
Um, those have a slight tint to them.
Okay.
Uh, going down the middle, there will be a, a blue, that might be one of our school colors, I'll announce later. And then there'll also be an orange going across the other way too.
Okay.
And then the image on the right is of course, I, I keep calling it Main Street because that connects the entire school together. So that's the view from coming in the back door from the buses, going straight down, you'll see the gymnasium to the right and the, the library and all those other spaces. It's quite impressive, you know, when I showed the students these images, uh, they were shocked how big the building truly was. And many of them even commented that this looks like a middle or high school, let alone an elementary school, so. There'll be some five-year-olds in awe when they walk in that front door in September, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a great moment for sure. So some of the work outside of construction that I always like to note. Last week, we had a, a staffing survey go out, which I talked about last meeting. Um, again, it's, it's all about three great elementary schools, this is not just a Quentin um, project. Along with our HR team, this survey went to all elementary staff, and it gives them an opportunity to give us feedback. You know, would they like to remain at their current elementary school, would they be open to transferring to either Watkins, New Ken Elementary or Quentin? So that will be going on until December first, giving people time to reflect and think about what their future perhaps looks like in New Ken. And once all that information comes back December first, we'll really start going through the data and the enrollments to see what our staffing looks like for next year. Our goal is by February one to let our staff know where they'll be. Uh, for one, we want to let them know early so they can start planning, but that also gives us time to get ahead and start recruiting if we need to. Uh, again, I, it comes up every meeting, these staff shortages, job fairs typically start mid-February. We're ready to run out before then and start getting some great people in the new camp. Number two and three up there, we just hit on it a little bit, but Timmy's been great about getting ahead of these orders and these. Uh, we, we know about the supply chain, we also know about inflation, and that we want to get these orders done now, so we can focus on the teaching and learning this spring. Um, so we've done a ton with signage, security cameras, playgrounds, a lot of discussions with interior design. Uh, so those uh, again are ongoing. And then the final project that I think most people are aware of. We've been looking for our mascot and school colors, it's been an amazing process and that's thanks to our community and how involved they've been. So we've did it in, in three stages, so November first through the seventh, that was an open forum to anyone who wanted to submit a mascot idea. We received a hundred and twenty-nine mascot ideas, quite impressive, unicorns, earthquakes, you name it. It was, it was fun to go through that. Uh, so after that week, we then pulled together some focus groups, staff and student. Uh, what was really nice for this planning principle was their ideas aligned, so what the adults said, the kids said, came together really nicely. Um, it was also great to get future Quinn students together to discuss. You know, I showed them the school, we talked about mascots and the role of the mascot, so we're, we're starting to kind of build some energy now to opening the school next year. So for the last week, people have been voting online, uh, we had about seven hundred people vote for our mascot. Uh, if people didn't want to vote online, we also gave out ballots at George Watkins for students, some classes engaged in a, a vote, then they crunched the data for me. I also included some visuals there, because, you know, some of our kindergartners can't quite read. Um, but as you can see up there, uh, those are our finalists, it was the Quentin Elementary Bucks, the Quentin Elementary Eagles. The Quentin Elementary Cubs and the Quentin Elementary Herons. So I thought it was a, a good sampling of, of perhaps mascot ideas. And the two color choices below come from the school's palette, we originally had nine on the initial survey. And those two were the most popular that we put out for vote. So without further ado, here's what we've got. So in terms of our school color, uh, we will be the Navy, uh, and that is a notable hue, I like to call it light blue. Um, so that will be our school's color, and we will see that throughout these spaces. Um, speaking to the architects and designers today, they're going to include that in our gymnasium, our soundboards. Um, I also like it too, because the fifth grade hallway has a blue theme to it. Um, so that's kind of like their, their voyage and their, their journey through Quentin Elementary School. In terms of our mascot, it was a very tight race.
So Kyle, before you, let's build anticipation a little more. So I was asked this afternoon what it was, so I said, oh, I have the presentation, let me go. So I went and went through it, and I, we've talked several times about where it is, and he knows my favorite, uh, and then it, my presentation ended here.
My wife doesn't know, my child.
So this has been a closely guarded.
What matters.
I was in a locked room all day today with the information. So if I go back a slide. Our, our fourth place was the, the Herons, I, I just thought that was great, like very creative, I love Herons. Um, but it was the, the fourth place vote, they did not have a lot. Our, our third place, um, the Eagles, so the, that was our third place, and it came down to the Bucks and the Cubs. It was a very tight race, and, and people would ask me on one morning, it would be Bucks, the next morning it would be the Cubs. Um, but very proud to say that tonight, um, we will be the Quentin Elementary Cubs. So the Cubs were the winners. We will, we will put this out, we'll start speaking with some graphic designers, and uh, we'll start working on our mascot. Our PR for the Cubbies.
The koalas did get in the initial round, we had a couple koalas, no, a hundred percent, we had at least two koalas, but they didn't make it past.
Yeah, two out of one twenty-nine. Not a strong showing for the.
The Bucks didn't make it.
It sounded like they were close.
A, a student did comment in our focus group that, you know, the. A student did comment in our focus group that, you know, the Cubs just, you know, they're strong. They're persistent, but they're still young and they need guidance. So I felt that that was.
Quite a bear.
Then another student said, well, the Buck, my dad hunts that, so I don't know if we will. So we are the Quinton Elementary Cubs.
That's a great choice.
Look forward to all the great things we're about to do.
We got so many interesting community discussions about it needs to be native to New Kent. And I said, well, I haven't seen a lion or a Trojan around. So, you know, but yeah, it would be nice if it was, there was a bear sighting in two thousand and eighteen.
Yes.
So we are.
That's great.
Go Cubs.
So any, any other updates for the school tonight? No? Okay, any questions, board members? All right, next item on our agenda is COVID nineteen pandemic grant funding update, Ms. Moreham.
And as Ms. Moreham approaches the bench, she's joined by Shannon Walton. Shannon Walton is our business manager. So often you get to see our division leadership team, but Shannon is, we couldn't do this work without her. So she manages a lot of these grants, she knows all the answers we don't know. And we just wanted you to be able to interact with Shannon, we think a lot of her, I'm very excited. She's been on our team almost as long as I've been here, so. But it's done a tremendous amount with this work. This was a request in the questions and Ms. McBeath actually asked in her comments as well, that we give an overview of where we are. So we have stopped and talked about these funds along the way, but now you'll be able to see it in it, it in its entirety. And I probably just took Ms. Moreham's opening, so I will be quiet and go right ahead.
Madam Chair, board members and Shannon, just thank you for being here, we appreciate Shannon's work with these grants. And a lot of this information is actually on doe.virginia.gov. There is a section on that webpage called COVID nineteen update. And you can find all of the information on the federal pandemic relief programs there as well. So this is just a little more detailed information specifically for New Kent. So rewind. It all started in two thousand and twenty, back in June, we had a round of requests come actually from the county. And we were able to be a part of submission into funding for that. And we did receive eight hundred fourteen thousand, one twenty-six, sixty-one, which was fantastic and definitely needed. And I won't read them all to you, but obviously you can see that there were a lot of projects that were included with all of those different buckets of money.
And really the focus on this one was around connection for community. This is the time we were virtual and making sure we had devices in the hands of teachers and students. Because when we first started, every teacher didn't have a device because we relied heavily on desktops. So this was critical in our jumpstart during the pandemic.
And you'll hear a common theme throughout this presentation. I just want to thank Chief Opet and his staff for really supporting the schools with the PPE needs and the cleaning supplies. They created a portal that the county could use and we were a part of that. And we had one individual at each school that could go into that portal and basically put in all of the different things that they needed. And they actually delivered it directly to each one of our schools. This was huge for us. We didn't, we didn't have facilities to keep it, we didn't have the manpower to order and store it anywhere. So we just want to really thank them, they have continued doing that. So thank you to them.
And it's also a testament to partnership with the county. Not every school division had had a partnership like this with the county, their school divisions have received no information. They allowed us to compete with requests each of their three rounds. And we were able to do things we couldn't have done because we didn't receive that type of funding during that time.
Once we got into the October timeframe, which was when the round three requests were coming through to the county. We did not get any of the round three requests approved and, but we did at that time start to see our own funding coming in for the school specifically. So we began with our CRF funding for federal coronavirus relief funds. This is five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. This one was a little tough because we found out about it in October. And we had to spend it by December thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. They did send out a memo on December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty. One day after we were required to spend all of the funding, that there was an extension by one year. So we appreciated that, however, we had already spent it. So that didn't really help us much. But look at all the wonderful things that we were able to do. This was specifically to prepare our schools and covering, preparing for responding to and mitigating the impacts of COVID.
So these fall under a similar umbrella, but they each have different rules, different timelines and different pieces, which is why Shannon and Haney have been critical to making sure that we have everything we need. So here you'll see a lot of things around cleaning. You know, interesting things you don't think about, we had to rent trucks, dumpsters and move furniture because we had the space to six feet, we had nowhere to put it. So we had to rent all that equipment to make sure that we were able to set up our schools and classrooms the way we needed to.
Yeah, just to point out a few other things, we had, you know, temperature scanners. Also just mitigating with office spaces and making sure that staff were protected, school radios, an ID badge machine. We had a room that we were renovating to pull some of our instructional administrative team out of the school buildings to free up spaces for COVID. Clinic areas and things of that nature. So we were able to do it out of that prep work with these funds.
And I think another thing that you'll see throughout these funds is we took some opportunities to make investments that post-pandemic will yield big results for us. So one of those examples is the freezer for school nutrition at George Watkins. That is a desperate thing that was on our checklist needs and we were able to accomplish that and use this funding for it.
We were doing a lot of the grab and go, we had a lot of parents coming through to pick up free meals. And with the George Watkins being the only school on that side of the county and open that up, that was a huge help to have that storage space out there to prepare for that. Our next grant that we're sharing, it was a set aside award, this was a competitive grant that we went for. And we received one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety cents. There were different buckets in this grant award and we received four of them for special education services and supports. Vision, which is technology-related items, cleaning supplies and facilities upgrades. And here are some of what we did with those fundings. And again, it was more logistically preparing our schools, a lot of the MiFi hotspots and services for staff and students. And then of course, preparing air scrubbers for our clinics, our clinics that we had to have a separate room for the COVID areas. So we prepared those with all the equipment that they would need. The next grant that we have, elementary and secondary school emergency relief, this is SR one funding, two hundred and fourteen thousand, four thirty-nine, twenty-seven. This was awarded in May of two thousand and twenty and we had to submit an application by August of two thousand and twenty. Again, this is to address the impact COVID nineteen has had and continues to have on elementary and secondary schools. Some of the big projects that we covered was our summer more program this summer. Thank you, Mr. Miller, on your efforts with that program. We also covered various supplies, I'm trying to look through this list and kind of summarize it. Again, for classroom spaces, health and safety of students and staff. This is the funding that we use for our healthcare claims for COVID that was presented at a couple of board meetings back. Support for the PPE warehouse. So Shannon worked closely with Chief Opet. Now that they have the warehouse and moving forward, what we did was prepare a large order to stock the warehouse. So that when we order the supplies through the portal, they're there in the warehouse for them to deliver. Next, SR two funding. This was awarded in January of twenty-one, applications were due in April. We received eight hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. These funds had to be expended and requested for reimbursement. The SR one had to be spent and requested prior to requesting for SR two. So there's a little bit of an overlap with the fiscal years and how we're able to reimburse for funding due to our fiscal year and then on June thirty. So there was a lot of logistics with that, Shannon helped with that a lot, we appreciate that. Basically, what we've presented with this funding is two full-time instructional coaches, which we have hired. And Ross might be able to speak to that, but I think they're specifically for elementary. And that covers that for two years, FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three. Again, summer of more for next year. A little bit of custodial services, additional custodial services. And we did originally have some HVAC upgrades, which we will need to revisit now because we received another grant later for HVAC upgrades.
And I think that's another theme that you guys have seen as we've gone through these grants is what we line up to initially spend them, spend on them. Sometimes we have other grants that come in that are directly related to them. So HVAC is a great example, when we received this, there were no HVAC grants that we were going to receive. Now that we've received an HVAC grant, now it's coming back to this and do an amendment with Virginia Department of Education. So anytime we change, we have to submit that amendment to the DOE and get approval once again on it. So that's a process in itself as well, but this is a grant we'll have to go back because we now have that money in a different state. And we have time.
We do, we do, and you'll see, I tried to include the, the dates that the expenses are required to be incurred on all of these grants. So you kind of see the theme, a lot of them are up to two thousand and twenty-four. The earlier grants are twenty-two, twenty-three, and then these most recent ones even beyond that. So what we're trying to do is really set ourselves up for the next three years with these additional supports. Summer of more, specifically the instructional coaches you'll see continued. And there are even initiatives that I think we have idealized in our minds that we even haven't really been able to put, you know, into motion yet. Because we just, we're thinking through, what else can we do? So I think there's time for all that and we're starting to work through those processes.
And we've been very mindful that it's grant funding. So we have some investments in personnel, the two instructional coaches specifically. But not heavy on that funding because when that funding goes away, it would have to be positioned, we'd either have to go away or be a part of the operating budget. So we do believe in the instructional coach position, we do think that'll have a place in our organization moving forward. This gives us an opportunity for, I think we have it for three years now through various funds, proof of concept so that we have time to build it in an operating budget if we chose to. Everything else is, is, comes down to an investment in the future.
Next up is the SR two set aside, this is another competitive grant that we went after and it was submitted May two thousand and twenty-one and awarded the month following that in June. These are to address unfinished learning and extended school year and year-round school programs. These have to be spent by two thousand and twenty-three, so a little bit quicker. These have been spent on virtual Virginia enrollment fees, we're looking at assessment and data management systems. And then additional supports for summer more, continued supports for summer more. After that, we have the American Rescue Plan, ARP, SR three funding. This is a large award, one point eight million dollars awarded in April of two thousand and twenty-one. We had to do an application by September of two thousand and twenty-one. This particular grant requires twenty percent of the award to address learning loss. If you see, if you visit our plan, we're actually doing better than that, that's important for us. This particular grant requires posting on our website, so you will find on our website the return to learn in-person instructional plan, along with this plan specifically of how we plan to utilize the one point eight million dollars.
Question about the website, who's, who's posting all of this information to the website?
We work with the division leadership team and usually we ask Ross when we need things posted and he'll, Miller will also create pages. We put it in different places on the website to make sure that it's available.
We're also required to have public hearings around it as well, which we had one. Do you have the date on there?
No, it was June seventh and we received public comment on both plans. So this is also to let you know that we'll also be receiving public comment on both of these plans on December sixth as well.
You can submit it electronically and we have that website on that email address or you can do it in person after the meeting.
So right now, we do not have any recommendations this evening for either of those two plans to be changed. We do think that we will see some plans to the return to learn instruction plan, probably sometime in January. Will be a little bit further with some of our other grants and what we're funding. So we may have a change to the funding side, but most likely that won't even come in January, that might be at a later date. We try to keep this particular application and when you're reading the plan, you'll see it's a little bit generic, just to hold room for things that we may want to do down the road. But you can definitely tell where the buckets of funding are within the plan.
We've highlighted a couple of times at our board meeting about the career switcher program, which we've lost, launched. And we have our first group of candidates going through. This is an example of one of the projects that goes right at teacher retention, ultimately learning loss. But it's also an investment, those folks will be with us for the next three to five years at least to fulfill the terms of the career switcher program. So the year-round school-based substitutes, people see year-round and they think year-round schools, what that means is that they're the school-based substitute that's with us all year. During the school year, not necessarily year-round, although we've talked about having them in the summer too to keep them.
So some of the things you'll see here, we, we did extend, like Dr. Nichols said, the full-time coaches into FY twenty-four, that's the third year. And he highlighted the career switcher program. And for any other things here, we did have funding actually for a part-time kind of like a grant manager type of a position, someone that can really put, put a lot of focus into specifically with SR three, with all of the guidelines, the things that you have to have, the public comment, the different review, there's committees that you have and all that information is in the plans. And we have done that, but, and this is very time-consuming, it takes a lot on Shannon, the whole team. So we just need a couple of extra hands on deck, so that was kind of what that was for. And then again, we originally had HVAC upgrades written into this grant, but like you'll see coming up, we think that we'll probably shift that out of this grant into the new grant and then use that funding for something else. Which is the next grant. So we just were awarded in October of this year, an HVAC replacement and improvement grant. The applications were due in November of twenty-one, which thank you, Mr. Pollak, that's a quick time to come up with the HVAC plan. Especially for this amount of money, so it's six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And there is a hundred percent local match requirement. So potentially that's one point two million in HVAC upgrades, which are definitely needed. And as you can see, the projects that we've looked to fund are finalizing the New Kent Middle School HVAC replacement project that you see in our CIP requests every single year. Controls and install at GW and the high school and then a makeup area unit here at the high school. We did request the matching portion for this grant through our recent CIP request to the county. They're still working to finalize their recommendation for what's approved in the CIP. However, we do feel comfortable that working together with the county, we will definitely have the funding for the match. It may be in the CIP, we may bring it to you in a transfer from our CIP prior year appropriations. But either way, we're committed to utilizing one hundred percent of this grant, this is important. And next, SR three set aside award. This is a competitive grant, again, Mr. Miller, I believe, is working on the application for this one. It was actually due tomorrow and we just received an extension until December first. So I know he has worked with our principals and instructional team to put together something for requesting, this is for summer learning programs, before and after-school programs and other learning loss initiatives. And last grant, this is another opportunity, it was just released on November twelfth. It was just released on November 12th. These applications are due on December 3rd, and we plan to go for this as well. It is a priority-based grant, and it is capped at 50,000 for divisions of our size. We cannot supplant anything that we're currently doing. But we can use this for FY22 and FY23. So if there's something specifically that we wanted to continue or do in next year, we could definitely write this grant to meet those needs. So we'll be meeting with Mervyn Hens and Jonathan Hawkman to just kind of go through what we may want to request to help with retention of our drivers. That's the last grant that we're aware of. I will say I've heard of others, and we have been on webinars where they have cautioned us with what to put in our grant applications because of the fact that there may be other applications coming out that would be specific to certain things, and they've shared some of those with us. So it's definitely, like Dr. Nichols said, there's going to be more grants that come, and it may be specific to something that we've already written into a prior grant. So at that point, then we would be going back, reviewing what's in that grant, making amendments, shifting things around. Because every grant that's available, obviously we want to try to go after it and get it. So we'll continue to do that.
And with an eye that in FY24, none of this money is available. So making sure that we're investing it smartly, so there is no cliff when we get to FY24, but our facilities are better. We've closed those gaps in learning loss, and we're in a good place moving forward.
So we've covered three years of Summer of More, 2021, 22, 23, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and if, the only thing right now that's preventing us from going a year out is the deadlines on the expense requirements. But if there's a grant that comes about, or if there's a way to extend it into a different grant where we could get an additional year, we would push that, you know, as long as we can, or potentially build in into our operating budget, if that's something that, you know, we want to try to continue down the road.
And we are fully committed to the summer piece. We saw great results in a, in a a large pilot this summer and plan to expand it over the next two pieces. But once again, that buys us time. One, to figure out what a cost is, because first summer we were sort of estimating to figure out what that would be and kind of build that in. So that, there are a couple of things that we are doing that we would like to build in a budget moving forward. Just, it gives us that time. Which may mean something has to come up. So it's not always just adding something in. You may have to move something out to make that happen.
So really just, this is really just more for me and Dr. Nichols to really reflect and make sure we were following kind of our standards that we had set up. These are our guiding factors. You know, we're trying to manage this pandemic in our schools and all of our facilities, the different departmental buildings that we have. We need to understand and address learning loss, most importantly. We need to also make sure that we're giving folks what they need. We, you know, the principals know what they need. We need to make sure we can get it to them. We're really trying to move New Kent forward beyond the pandemic. You know, we really want our schools to have what they need now, but also plan ahead and make sure that we're also doing things to move New Kent forward. And the most important thing that we need to do is remain flexible with every single funding source that we get, because it's constantly changing. And I think we've done a really good job of that. And that's really all we have this evening.
If you stop by the office, you can see it all on a giant marker board. Different colors laid out, because we look at it every day, and making sure we have the right pieces in the right places.
Well, thank you, Haney, for your hard work and your staffs and everyone else who goes into doing this. I know it's a, I know it's a real challenging of a juggling act, day in and day out of making it happen, but I appreciate all you, all your folks do to make it happen, to get the necessary funding for the progress that we need for the future of the school system and the future of our programs and facilities to do that, because I know that it's not an easy task. So thank you so much for your hard work, and it's definitely appreciated by, I know, by this board and especially by the staff that you make all this happen. So.
Agreed.
Thank you. And we just wanted to note that there's an email address, NKCPSfeedback@nkps.k12.vad.us, and that's also online on the SR3 plan page, and any input that anyone wants to provide. They can certainly call us, come see us, send it through that email address. That is specific to SR3 funding, but of course, you know, really with any, with any grant funding that we receive. We're always happy to hear ideas. The division leadership team has been wonderful with coming up with ideas. Ross's team, Shannon, just sometimes we were in a pinch where we did not want to lose funding, you know, and there's, there's got to be something that someone needs always. So we're always trying to make sure that if you need something, ask, no matter what it is, because most likely we have a way of getting it for you right now.
Okay. That's it. Thank you very much. It was very informative. Appreciate that. Let's see. Now we are going to move on to our action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations regarding personnel matters as presented?
I move we approve the superintendent's recommendations regarding personnel matters as presented.
And do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. See, I think that's it. Our next meeting will be our December monthly meeting on December the 6th. We will not have a work session on December the 20th, unless something comes up, because it's not needed at this time.